Thank you. Good evening. This is the Tuesday, December, I'm sorry, November 26, 2024, Public Meeting of the Verona Board of Education. If we can all, and it is 7:05 and I'm calling the meeting to order, if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger and posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting set forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education Office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions had been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. May we have the roll call attendance?
Mr. Walker, here. Mrs. Brazella.
Here.
Mrs. Farrar, for the record, Mrs. Farrar is absent. Mrs. Prisco, also absent for the record. And Ms. Boone.
Here.
We have Coram, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. I think we're gonna skip down right to the, okay. So for routine matters, we're approving the minutes of the last regular session on November 12th and the special meeting on November 24th. Can we have the roll call? Or do we need a motion to approve?
Moved.
Before you do that.
I'll second.
Just amend this.
We do that, just amend B, it was not a closed session, it was a workshop.
Okay. So to amend that, the special meeting on November 21st was a workshop, not a closed session. So if we can have a motion to approve the amended version?
Yes, so moved.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and so now we will jump down to number eight on our agenda, the Verona High School Marching Band.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us.
Welcome.
Just checking, okay, great. Good evening and thank you for having us here. I'm Mr. Lynch and this is the wonderful senior group of the Verona Marching Maroon and White. I've just prepared some comments before a short performance and individual recognition of people who are here tonight and actually some people who couldn't make it tonight, but we wanted to recognize them as well. So thanks again for having us. The 2024-25 Verona High School Band seniors are a passionate, devoted, and enthusiastic group of students. Their ability to balance rigor, discipline, and hard work with humanity, sensitivity, kindness, and empathy is without peer. As they entered their freshman year, we are in time of transition back from COVID. Together, we started the New Jersey Marching Band Association in the fall of 2021, with our show Atlas winning the Mayor's Cup at West Orange High School and finishing third at state championships. When we reflect that year on the other top two bands with Verona, I wanted to note that those schools had 5,000 and 3,000 students respectively. Sophomore Mirror brought our show Sophomore Year, brought our show Masquerade. As we move forward in our rich history by embracing pop and vernacular music along with the more traditional repertoire of the Western European canon, the VHS Marching Maroon and White returned to West Orange with another Mayor's Cup victory. March 2023 marked a huge moment for our music family as we returned to Disney, claiming victory over COVID and celebrating our music family down Main Street in the Magic Kingdom with Mickey and friends. Guys like Mickey? You have to, right? As junior year came along, we embraced our epic Bach Enroll Show and rolled a rock stage onto the field. For the first time, we decided to go to an event hosted by Bands of America, the National Football League, so to speak, of the band world. We were the only single A school to enter that event, meaning that the population of our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders were under 600 people. Naturally, we won the competition as the only school, but after further research, we realized as a community that we were the second highest scoring band in the country from events that range from a two-day event in St. Louis, Missouri, to Riverdale, California, back to Rutgers University. Later in that school year, March of this year, to be exact, we hosted the Region Concert Band Festival, taking a gold rating and the award for best percussion. Senior year brought our wonderful One in the Universe show depicting Earth, Sea, Moon, and Mercury. We took second place at both the West Orange and Randolph Festival and returned to Bands of America where this year we had the third highest score of A bands in the country. We are thrilled with the full support of the administration and Board of Education to travel internationally this year to Toronto. Some more highlights of the Verona Band since 2000. We've had 14 gold ratings at the Region Concert Band Festival, seven invitations to the New Jersey State Gala Concert, a state championship, an all-state championship, and two Cadets Awards of Excellence for the Marching Maroon and White. We were awarded a perfect score at the Virginia Beach Music in the Parks and we were awarded the illustrious Sweepstakes Award at Music in the Parks. Without further ado, I want to start by recognizing the students who are not here tonight. Francesca Bopp, Isabella Bopp, Ava Pennella, Nina Zavanda, Ariel Ballario, Ella Barci, and Kalen Walsh, who's not feeling well tonight, but we're so proud of her. I'd like to introduce our drum major, Dylan Frye, our percussion section leader, Wes Brown, senior trumpet, William McGrath, senior trumpet, Mark Evans Calixte, senior flute player and section leader, Camille Pajones, senior assistant drum major and soloist on Dark Side of the Moon, Pedro Chinadad Ruiz, senior band lieutenant, William Strong, senior trombonist, Daniel Frankel, and finally, senior assistant drum major and the other soloist on Dark Side of the Moon, Owen Shinana. Can you join me in giving a huge applause to the seniors of the Marching Maroon and White?
Now, we had a little debate, everybody. We said we couldn't play all of Sleigh Ride for you because then you wouldn't come to the concert. Is that true? No? Well, we only rehearsed a portion. But this will be fun. This is our little chamber version of Sleigh Ride. Are we good, guys?
Thank you so much. It truly takes a village from our wonderful administration, our wonderful Board of Education, the absolutely unparalleled Verona Music Parents Association, the entire community, and thank you again to the wonderful seniors. Happy holidays, happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you at the holiday concert, right?
We can start heading outside.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I'll be sure to go to the concert. It's amazing. Yeah, no, it is. It is a very good time. If anyone hasn't seen it, it's a great concert. Very good.
Yeah, so I have a couple of short announcements that I'll do later that are really, tonight is dedicated to the band and to Dr. Miller and the Curriculum Department and Mr. Cogdill and Mr. Merkler are here to do the advanced placement as well as what many of you are here for to celebrate the hard-working students in our Advanced Placement Program. Dr. Miller, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. That was a great performance. It's a good segue for us. I'd like to thank everyone here in the audience and those that are at home. We're going to present a little drum roll, our AP Highlights and Scholars Presentation. We're going to talk about some wonderful happenings that are occurring here at Verona High School. We we focus on the AP around this time every year. We have a lot of teachers that work really hard and the predecessors to them that prepare our students for our AP classes. So we'll begin with our mission statements to empower our students to cultivate their intellectual curiosity and social responsibility. We'd like to acknowledge and thank all of our students who were enrolled in last year's AP as well as this year, but we're talking about last year. We certainly appreciate your hard work, perseverance, and the hours you spent studying and learning college-level content. I thank all of our teachers for working tremendously hard preparing our students. It's a lot of hours grading papers, preparing lesson plans, et cetera. Thank all of our parents, some that I'm looking at in our audience. I have children of my own who are in AP classes and I study with them. So it's good to have all of us as a sounding board while they're learning college-level work in high school. And again, I'd like to thank our entire administrative team starting in our elementary school and working all the way up to our superintendent of schools as well as the Board of Education. Thank you for all of your support as we continue to do this. Is there a way that we can move that internal camera that's there or minimize it? Slide maybe top. If you could go, yeah, if you go top left, that would be helpful because I have a lot of things that are going to appear on the, okay. All right, so we'll begin with our first slide. It's AP Participation since 2009. We begin in 2009 because that's when we began to allow more students to take Advanced Placement courses. Prior to that, there were entrance exams to get in. If you are here, you know that is not the case. If you would like to take an honors and eventual AP course, we encourage you. Our high school administration does, our supervisory team does, I do. Mrs. Giuseppe, we encourage you to take these courses. So last spring, 294 unique students, so total students nearly 300, sat for 549 AP exams. And our participation, so can you move that up a little bit more? Please? Slide up a little bit. Thank you. So this slide here shows our percent of unique VHS student AP participation since 2009. If you look in 2009, we had around 14% of our students that were attending Verona High School at the time were actually taking AP courses. Last year, if you take a look, we are around 46.5, 47%, so nearly one out of two students in our high school was taking at least one AP course. So that's an amazing, I think, statistic that we all should be proud of. We are encouraging college-level work while they're here at high school. If you have anyone who's in college, we were just talking, was talking to Reese, there's a lot of freedom, but there's also like if you can learn some of those really good skills while you're here, it prepares you really well. And sometimes some students start as a sophomore with a number of AP classes that they take. So we encourage that. These next four slides, we're gonna go over our VHS AP participation over the last five years. So the blue is from the year 2020 and then red is 2021, 2022 is yellow, green, and then orange. And you look at, so we stacked it on purpose. English Lit is our most popular in the English and world language sector, followed by English Language Arts, and then we have Chinese, French, and Spanish. If you take a look at our participation in history, the most subscribed is our Psychology. Over the last two years, it's been nearly 180 students. But you'll see there's also our European history we offer every other year. US History has good numbers as well as others. If you look at Mathematics, Statistics is the one that stands out, but if you were to stack our Calculus, A, B, and B, C, you would be a neck and neck if it's a race. And I'd like to point out our Computer Science A and Computer Science Principles are really well-attended for such a small size. Our total population this year is around 600? Guys, around there? So to have that many students last year, 70 students is pretty remarkable in a school this size. We're fortunate to have three teachers who have the ability to teach that, that course, those courses. And we look at science, environmental science is our most subscribed, but biology had a really strong showing last year. Chemistry, our numbers are a little smaller this year. I would like to report in chemistry, we have 23 students still, so that's really something to shout out about as well as our Physics and Physics C, which are a little lower enrollment, but our students work hard in those courses. They're challenging. Then this slide talks about the percentage of total AP students with scores of three or better. So if you look in 2020, 2020, Mr. Lynch mentioned it, we were experiencing COVID, like everything shut down in March. I think it was March 13th. We still went through with AP, so we had really around 80% of our students. And then that following year, we were learning some remote instruction, et cetera. The numbers dropped some. But as you can see, from 2022, 23, and 24, we're moved right back up. We're nearly, we're 76.5% of our students scored a three or better. And in college, you can score between a one for the exams, it's between a one and a five. If you get a three, four, or five, you have a possibility of gaining college credit, which is what we want. And but we also want that experience of wrestling with these concepts while we're in high school, where you can see your teacher at lunch coming early, after school, et cetera, and nearly every day. Overall AP average scores, so in 2020, that was our highest average ever with a 3.34, again with 629 exams administered. If you take a look, there was a dip with COVID, but as you see, we're coming back up and we rounded out last year with a 3.31 average, which again is really amazing for the amount of tests that we administered, which was 547 with nearly 300 students. Our AP score distribution, if you look, again, blue is a one, two is red, a three is considered passing, is like a yellow color, green, and then red. If you take a look from 2021 and if you move over, our blue has shrunk, our red has gone smaller, but the yellow, the green, and the orange is what you want to see. They've all gotten bigger. So we're getting more fives, we're getting more fours. Life is more normal with AP. The students are like, it's a little, it's a tough experience. In this slide, this is the number of exams that were administered by course. So if you see the ones that are blue, they're considered our STEM classes. It's our Science, Technology, and Math, and our green are Humanities, which would be English and Social Studies, and then what's in purple are Music and World Language. The ones that stand out in Humanities is Psychology. It was 78 tests administered last year. The year before that was 97. I would like to say that we now have successive courses. We have two electives that they can take past Psychology, which is neat. You can graduate Verona High School with three Psychology courses, which is kind of neat. Biology was the second with 62. So and then you'll see everyone in between. Here's another look for the average AP test score by course from the spring of 2024. Again, the same colors, the STEM are the blue, Humanities are green, and our overall average is in maroon on the right. And that percent of AP exams with a score of three plus by course. So some of our courses are fortunate enough where every student who takes it, even if they're larger numbers, every student earns a three, four, or five, which is pretty incredible. As you can see, some of them are standing really tall at the top. This is a neat, wanton slide. I think this is, for me, as a mathematician, it's like artwork. For others, they're like, I might need some help, but I do like this slide. What is the bar graph is the courses athetically that are AP for us with the average scores. And then what's in blue is the New Jersey average. And then what is in orange-ish color is the global average. And I'm gonna post this on our webpage later if you'd like to take a look. I'd like to print that out and put on my wall. I think that's pretty cool looking. The next one is AP scores that are three or higher. As you can see, again, they're alphabetical and you see a lot of 100 percents and high in the 90s. And then what you see again is what New Jersey does with blue and then what the overall, everyone who takes it, the AP population. Again, I want to emphasize that this school district allows students to take AP. There are still school districts that are even near us where you have to have entrance exams and you're not allowed to get in. So we are proud that we let a lot of students take these college-level courses and they're learning them here. It's really a cool thing here. And then we're gonna go to some highlights. I'd like to bring up Mr. Stevenson.
Good evening, everybody. Just a quick highlight on our AP Chem scores. AP Chem tends to be, I guess, a little bit of a boot camp kind of course. Kids go through it and I see a smirk. It becomes this memorable thing, but they all go off on the college and they report back like, hey, no problem, we got this. We teach everybody else. The scores are honestly pretty remarkable. An average of 3.77 over the last five years. Dr. Webay prides herself on this, if you know her. She's a tough love lady and I don't think she gets enough credit for the love part of the tough love. This is kind of an overview of AP Computer Science A over time. Way back in the early days, we kind of shuffled the sequence. A lot of schools will have feeder classes. You have to take this and that, and then AP CompSci A. We took that away. And there was even one year, it might have been 2018, if we just counted female participation, we would have still been first in the state in participation for just females. Total of 480 students over the last 16 years. AP Computer Science Principles is our other AP Computer Science course. It's relatively new and we've had fantastic scores over the past five years. All credit to Ms. Russell as she's taught this. AP Statistics. This is Mr. Orr. We have an increasing sort of score rate in this department. I think he's been doing a great job. Total increase from 2023 and 2022 of 1.25 points overall. AP Physics C is creeping up. This is a smaller population, but even with our small population, if you compare that to the state, like if the state of New Jersey was a high school the size of Verona, only five kids would take this course. We have 10. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Peter.
I am going to zip through some Humanities highlights so we can get to the good stuff while you're all with us this evening. I did want to shout out Ms. Wallerstein, who is our AP Human Geography teacher who has seen tremendous success and consistent success over the last several years. That's a student average score of 3.63. Our micro and macro economics teacher, Dr. Tamboro, has seen tremendous growth just in the last couple of years. That's 1.57 points from 2022. That's tremendous. We've also seen a huge growth in population. We currently have 59 students enrolled in microeconomics this year. Our AP Psychology scores have also grown over the last several years. We're almost a point higher than we were in 2022. Congratulations to Mr. Hirschman. Our AP Government and Politics scores, also with Dr. Tamboro, sits at 4.71 this year, which is truly remarkable and I'd say unheard of. Our AP US History scores are consistently strong, thanks to Mr. Bresnan. They sit at 3.62 over the last five years. And our AP World History scores with, just note, is our freshman AP course. This course is not always traditionally a freshman course in many high schools, so a special shout out to Ms. Seppsi. She's had a student average of nearly 4.0 since 2020. Our AP Lit and Comp scores have been consistently strong and we'd just like to, of course, thank Mr. White, who retired this year. We dearly miss him and his wonderful success with over 240 students in the last eight years. And of course, English Lang, which is Dr. Meyer's course. She has instructed nearly 500 students over the last 19 years in AP Lang, a tremendous testament to her success as a teacher both in and out of the AP classroom. And then I'm gonna turn it back over to Dr. Miller, Mr. Cogdill, and Mr. Merkler, who will wrap us up and we'll get to our AP Scholar Presentations.
Okay, this is just a real quick snapshot of where we were in 2023 versus 2024. And if it's to the right of the bar, it means we've experienced some growth with our classes. And if we're to the left, a little bit of a decrease, I will note the ones that we had an increase of 13 courses, seven of them that were slightly decreased. They were really high last year. So you know what they say when you're at the top? You know? You get no weight, but you had to have to come down. Two courses had the same student average and two courses were not scheduled the year prior. This is the big thing that when I was going to get my doctorate, Mr. Cogdill was really working on this idea of AP potential. And we get a lot of this information from Mr. Cogdill as well as Mr. Wertz. And this is what, when we take, we think it's in the middle of October, when we administer the PSAT. And what we do is from the scores, we can actually predict how students will do based upon the numbers. And if you look at the blue, it's what's predicted. And if you look at the maroon, it's how the students actually perform. So the maroon should be bigger. And for most of our courses, the maroon is higher. So we call this, we had 186 scores that were predicted to be a two, 224 were actually above a two. And this right here, this graph shows it here, and you can see with psychology and stats, they really outperform. So it's the teacher, it's the students, it's your support. It's a lot of hard work, a lot of late nights sometimes of making this accomplishment. So 38 students outperformed their AP potential. When we go to predict it for grade for a score of three or better, you'll notice against some of the maroon that sticks out. So out of 266 that were predicted, 359 were actually outperformed a three or better. And you'll see here, Biology, 14 students. So shout out to Mr. Harris, CompSci with Ms. Russell. Environmental Science, if you look all the way to the right, we have Psychology. We have Stat. We even have Economics with Dr. Tamboro, so remarkable. 93 students outperformed their AP potential. Same thing with four, when you take a look. And if you look at the really tall one, that's that's Psychology. Again, Mr. Hirschman doing a great job with students working really hard. Again, Psychology, we've all had to take this course, so it's really kind of fun. 79 scores were predicted and again, 133. So what we've shown you over time, and it's been since 2009, is that if you let kids take it, if more kids that take it, they actually do better. And I challenged the other schools in our area to do what we do. You know? So this is the performance. Again, if you take a look, it's the Psychology. That's really a lot higher as well as the stats. Apologies that it's so small. 54 students. So I'd like to talk about this and then we're gonna present our certificates. Okay, so right here, we get recognition often. And Mr. Cogdill's office, he has a bunch of these plaques that outline it. But two years ago, they started, it's the Honorable Recognition. And I'd like to say that we are receivers of this award again. So the criteria is three things. And I'd like to say that we are receivers of this award again. So the criteria is three things. College culture, 40% or more of the graduating cohort took at least one AP exam during high school. You saw where over 50. College credit, 25% or more of the graduating cohort scored a three or higher in at least one exam. Check. We do that. College optimization, 2% or more of the graduating cohort took five or more AP exams during high school. At least one of those exams was taken in ninth or 10th grade, so that the students are spreading their AP experiences across the grades rather than feeling disproportionate pressure in any single year. That still happens. But if the more we can spread it out, working with our counselors, we try to make the ride a little more enjoyable for our students. And we have evidence when students go to college and they come back, they're like, yeah, I got a lot of information in high school. So on this slide here, we earn Gold Status. And if you look to the right, schools can earn the additional AP Access Award if the percentage of AP exam takers are underrepresented minority and or low income. Mirror the school's overall students demographics. There's two schools in New Jersey. There's a lot of school districts. There's over 600, last time I checked. There's two school districts in New Jersey that received this gold with access. It's Verona High School and it's Leonia. So it's quite an accomplishment. With our board's support and superintendent's support, all the way down to our teachers and our students who are working really hard. Sometimes those sleepless nights really pay off. Again, it's an honor, us and Leonia. So we should give a round of applause for that. I think it's pretty pretty amazing effort. And to get this, it's all through hard work. And this is, again, a representation of if you if you allow kids to take these courses, they can do them. And we've seen it when they learn in when they learn in high school. When they go to colleges, a little less fear. There's more of like, I can do this. I've done this. I'm ready. And we get a lot of reports back. Would you like to make a couple of comments about what you've heard? Yeah.
I just want to thank Dr. Miller and the CIA Department and Ms. Giuseppe for when this happened this evening. More importantly, I mean, data aside, a lot of data, by the way. You know, you're a math guy. I'm not. What I'm about is about the human connections. You guys have some really great teachers, I think, and I hope that you saw that. But we also have some really great students. And for me, what I see when I walk into classrooms is just so much engagement. And what Dr. Miller was talking about, I agree, like, we don't need to be your roadblock. And I'm proud to say that Verona is not a roadblock where we opened the doors and you guys rose to the occasion. I just want to, I'm proud of you. I know you're going to keep doing great things and I can't wait to see what you do after you graduate from Verona High School. So this is all great data and thanks for sharing it. You guys are awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Cogdill. And then so just real quickly, our number of scholars since 2009. So this is kind of neat, like, this is why you're here, hearing this and at home, if you can hear me, if you're in college, hi. But in 2009, we had 12 AP Scholars and that's an amazing accomplishment. But as you can see, the stacks have gotten bigger over time. And with the AP Scholar, which we're going to announce shortly, along with AP Scholar with Distinction and with Honor, they do not have the national one anymore. They finished that in 2020. We have 103. So the population last year was 600? Little more 600. 16.7% probably. Let's round up to 17% of our students are AP Scholars. It's amazing. And I think if you talk to your children, they're going to be like, yeah, I feel prepared. It's hard, but I'm getting ready. Even from a coaching perspective, like I used to coach too, it's like, yeah, but put me in the game. I'm ready to go. So we are going to do AP Scholar. There are 49 students. If they're not all here, what we'll do is we'll announce a name at a time. And we will, if the person's not here, we can clap. So your hands will get sore, but it's a good sore. It's worth it. And if you are here, if the student is here, they can come up. And if a parent's here, you can come up. We will go through AP Scholar, Scholar with Honor and Distinction. And when we're done, we'll just ask for a brief pause and we're going to go out and get a photo opportunity. So while you're here, we want to celebrate you. You're amazing people. So let's begin. Our AP Scholar is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams.
Going to do my very best. I had a little bit of name bootcamp earlier this evening to make sure I got these right. And I'll begin just one time, I want to start at the back of the alphabet, but my list isn't prepared that way. Next time, guys, I promise. Tanzila Ahmed. Samantha Anderson. Leonel Andrade. Katherine Bernard. Sarah Bosco. Christopher Caldera. Evan Carlson. Sophia Chinana. Angelina Chung. Fiona Church. Brian Cleaver. Margot DeCosta. Cara De Mars. Alexandra Dodarian. Caitlin Ng. Lily Farrell. Charles Fidal. Dylan Frey. Olivia Fuentes. Joyce Gabriel. Jacqueline Gardner. Rony Galley. Francesca Jishin. Kaya Gumasayak. Went a little too fast there. I'm sorry. Arlen Halliday. Jack Harmon. Theo Heitzman. Matthew Humon. Danielle Embriano. Riley Kendrick. Shayna Cogan. Reese Lifclass. Dylan Neal. Wendell and Neil. Charlotte North. Nia Pilari. Ariana Ricci. Samantha Rizzi. Ella Romancian. Kieran Smith. Evan Spong. Julia Stojcescu. William Strong. Matthew Vaccaro. George Anne Valera. Marguerite Valera. Allison Vasquez. Yanni Yanoidis. And Nina's with Zawandi. Zawandi? Right to the end. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate something. I'm very proud of all of you that just got the certificate and those that are home. I just want to reiterate one other thing. Even if you didn't score a three, four, or five, I'm still proud of you because here's the thing, the college board and the research indicates even having taken the course and scoring a one or a two, which is obviously not what we're aiming for, but even if you do, your odds of doing better in college are higher than having never taken the course. So listen, some days it's your day on a test, just like if you play sports, some days you win the game, sometimes you don't win the game. But I respect the runner and I'm just proud of, even if you got a one or a two and you didn't get a certificate tonight, still proud of you. Okay?
Thank you for that. Thank you. Next slide is AP Scholar with Honor. We have 17 students and it's described as granted to students who receive an average of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more. There's a lot of numbers there. Okay, our first recipient is Marissa Barnett. Juliette Fernicola. Chloe Geeson. Sean Hegarty. I'm proud you're still clapping. Keep it up. Hannah Koffler. Violet Leicas. Zia Mahmoud. Congrats. William McGrath. Sadie McMahon. Angelina Odell. Lauren Paz. Caitlin Portuja. Alexa Polanco. Abigail Schust. Pedro Trinidad Ruiz. Congratulations. Megan Nguyen. And finally, Elliot Zibert.
All right. And our last group of scholars are AP Scholars with Distinction. The AP Scholar with Distinction Award is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more exams. I'll start with Kate Aronato. Kelly Barrow. Eleanor Battersby. Sophie Beaubau. Marcus Benninghoff. Nicholas Boke. Rachel Boticchio. Faith Brawley. Owen Chanana. Luca Di Fabrizio. Max Della Farra. Kira Dolan. Daniel Frankla. Josh Hayes. Molly Hayder. Andrew Healy. Tyler Holland. Patrick Humon. Daniel Kozachuk. Isabella Lambert. Christian Latori. Jack Latson. Gabe Levine. Zoe Levine. Brielle Marchese. Megan McGrath. Grace McMahon. Victoria Nieselik. Julia Nogales. Esteban Patron Michelad. Jackson Pope. Reese Sahado. Christopher Sluck. Kalen Walsh. Jeremy Williams. Riley Ying. And finally, Ian Zaluski.
And finally, just like to thank everyone for being here, to all our AP Scholars, and like Mr. Cogdill said, for all of our students who participated last year, you're all winners and you've all learned a lot. And we'd like to have one final round of applause.
Mr. Miller, if I could jump in real quick?
Yeah, sure.
What I really like about the entirety of what we just saw is that I think the equity of Verona's approach is really strong. It seemed like there was a point in time where kids were denied the access to take this test if they didn't meet certain criteria. I assume those were fear would bring the scores down. And it seems like the evidence is showing that that hasn't been the case. But even if it had been the case, I would still want the district to move forward with this approach because I think the practice is just as important as the results. I think that you know, in high school, the ACT or the SAT or the AVAP, that's a big gatekeeper. And the kids that go on to further education, I think they're going to find the Praxis or the Elset or the MCATs going to be a gatekeeper. So I'm happy that the district understands that the scores on these standardized tests are important because these standardized tests are impactful to the kids. And I like that we don't deny anyone the access to that opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you.
And just to follow on, Mr. Walker, as a parent of two children who went through a lot of these programs, either post-college or current college, their success has been really the foundation of what we're seeing here. And as a parent, I'm indebted to what Verona provided for that. So again, congratulations to everybody in here. And all I can say is just keep it up. all I can say is just keep it up.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to relay a message from Ms. Prisco and Ms. Ferrera. They unfortunately, this is like the one day they both are out and they were both, they're actually very upset that they weren't here to see the band and the AP Scholars, um, but they wanted to extend their heartfelt congratulations to the students and the parents particularly. My own daughter did an AP test last year and I remember the stress of that. Um, so you know, the parents are a very important piece of this puzzle. Um, so we want to give a shout out to them. Um, and I also had a parent who couldn't be here, reach out to me to, uh, specifically ask me to give her thanks for having this presentation. So Ms. North, Wendy North, um, she told me I could use her name, reached out to say that she really appreciates the, the Board of Ed, the, um, administration and the staff for holding this event.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Congratulations to everyone. Thank you for doing a great presentation. And why don't we give, um, if you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Uh, but we'll give you a few minutes to, uh, get up and go if you need to and, uh, we'll hold the meeting. Thank you. Oh, take pictures. They're going to be taking pictures out in the hall.
Right up.
By the Verona.
Yeah. Yeah, by the, by the.
By the, by the front office.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Ryan's doing a great job.
He is doing a fabulous job. We are very fortunate to have two very strong student reps start off our our journey down this road. Okay, so I guess we will go back to the superintendent's report.
The superintendent is tired after that. Just a couple of things, actually. There was a question, I don't remember who asked it, um, at the last meeting regarding the Walt Disney trip and the cost of.
Oh yeah, we're gonna reverse that.
Uh, it was you. Okay, Chris, and the cost of travel for Mrs. Crusoe and it does not need to be board approved because her trip is included um, with, it's free for the, for the coach.
That, thank you for that information. Uh, my main point and I'm sure you understood it was just to make sure that she was getting, uh, but I'm happy to see that, of course, the district did it due diligence. Thank you.
And, uh, just an update, we are starting to see, um, as, um, our residents are moving into Verona flats, we are starting to see, um, some registrations in our schools. Uh, we have, uh, at least three that I know of in, uh, HPW and a couple at the high school. Um, I haven't seen any elementary registrations yet. I, I suspect that, um, they're waiting till after the holiday and, and having a clean start, um, after Thanksgiving. Uh, I could be wrong on that. Uh, we do see a lot of U-Hauls, a lot of, uh, moving trucks in that compound, um, in the complex, I should say. Uh, so welcome to all of our new students and, uh, we do our best to make you feel welcome and, um, supported in your move, mid-year move. And just a happy Thanksgiving to everyone here and the community and, uh, take the time to enjoy, um, hopefully delicious food and time with family.
Thank you very much. Um, and now we will do the student report. Ryan Gow.
Okay, um, good evening. So as we shift into the winter, like things have been relatively quaint considering uh, VHS is more exuberant weeks, so this report will be a little shorter than you usual. And I'm pretty sure that's for the better considering the length of the AP presentation. But, uh, last, last Saturday, uh, last Thursday, the Student Council hosted our annual volleyball tournament fundraiser with students competing against each other in teams. Uh, also alongside participation from our staff as well. The, uh, Avant Garde Club hosted their open mic night last Tuesday with upwards of twenty students performing and expressing themselves in a multitude of ways, whether it was an act or a musical performance among others. Uh, I was unfortunately unable to attend this event, but I heard it was more than a massive success. And there was even, I believe, a renowned guest poet in attendance. So I kudos to the organizers, participants and attendees, of course. Uh, last Thursday night, our VHS cheerleaders had the opportu- opportunity to perform for the second year in a row, in a row, to perform before the New Jersey Devils game. Along with this, uh, momentous experience, some of our VHS cheerleaders also had the oppor- opportunity to go down and perform at Disney World on Main Street at the Varsity Spirit Spectacular. I don't know why I'm tripping over mine. And I'd just also like to congratulate some of our very own VHS football players on being named to the Super Football Conference's National Red All Divisions Team this year. And otherwise in athletics, uh, yesterday in November twenty-fifth marked when practices started for winter sports. And lastly, the VHS Chamber Choir is off to make their New York City debut next Tuesday, December third, will the choir will be opening for the Radio City Rockettes at the Christmas Spectacular. And the Chamber Choir is extremely excited and grateful for this amazing opportunity. And since we're nearing Thanksgiving, I'd just like to wish everyone here a happy Thanksgiving. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so we will move on to committee reports. I think all we have this week is finance. So I can do that if you want, Mr. Boone.
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, we'll keep it short. Um, and then, uh, the salary guides have been approved. I think we reported on that. We did our, uh, a rebond referendum, uh, a referendum rebonding went through. Um, it's going to save the Verona taxpayers five hundred seventy-six thousand, two hundred dollars in interest payments over the remaining seven years of the bond. So it comes out to just about eighty thousand dollars a year, um, for the taxpayers. The, um, budget, uh, calendar, the re, the, it's going to be going to the administrators and department heads to start their build, um, in the next few days. Um, we did discuss that we are going to have to put together an RFP for food service this year. Um, and we, the board will have to decide um, at some point if we're going to join national, gonna try to join National School Lunch or if we're going to stay out of the school lunch. Um, playground is still.
Question on that real quick, but why? We're gonna have to put the, the RFP out to see who services our food service program, but whoever we get will have to provide that option to us anyway, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, and just to clarify on that, um, so let's say we don't enter the National School Lunch Program for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, we will have to then later do a separate RFP for the National School Lunch Program. So, so the, the current RFP as, as, um, it's usually a five-year uh, contract.
So the RFP is going to be for the next five-year contract.
Correct.
But part of the rubric would be that you'd have to at least offer this option should the district wish to do it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I thank you.
And and I think that is really the highlights. Anything I missed? That you want to, okay?
And, and just for the record, uh, we did have a facilities discussion scheduled, but, um, absent of a, a complete board, there's a couple of uh, items that Mr. Cruz and I talked about, um, that, that does require, uh, board commitment on steps forward. I would just like to have that discussion, uh, the next time we meet so that we can fully discuss it.
I want to make that, can we make that a note in our next open public, uh, open, open business? Thank you.
And I just have one more thing I apologize is sitting right in front of me, in front of you, you have, uh, China unveiled. So, um, we've had a request from, um, Mrs. Chin, our Mandarin teacher at the middle school, to host this trip over spring break. And, um, this is, uh, I just wanted the board to have more information. So this is an overview of what they would be doing on that trip. The cost per student is on the second to last page, uh, looking at three thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars per person for an eight-day trip. All three meals, um, per day, um, to China and it's a, it looks like an amazing opportunity. I know we are, um, there's concerns about international travel right now, but just take a look at it. Since we don't have a full board, we'll have that discussion.
Well, here's a question I would have.
Yeah.
If, if we know the law now says that if a child can't afford a field trip, the district's going to have to incur the cost. Um, it, that, that might be something that would, we'd have to factor into this trip.
Yes, like, absolutely.
Does make it different than the summer trips that are
That are not school.
That are not school sponsored. I'm gonna make that very, that's a not, not school sponsored event, so.
And I know Mrs. Chin, uh, took the kids to China in twenty-seventeen and twenty-nineteen, but that was a different situation at that time. Um, but I did want to, I just, she came to my office today. She really wants to do this. It is a great opportunity for kids, but that is, um, a very important point.
Think that, you know, I don't speak for the board, but I certainly believe a lot of us would, would want the kids to have as many opportunities. Um, but, but I think that might be a tipping point or a, a deal breaker in any given year that they do this. If the district has to pay for two or three kids, uh, that's a lot of money, but if, if not, then I'd kind of like to see us offer this opportunity.
Thank you.
So my, my question is, is why is this program? Like you mentioned previously, it was in the, a summer, not affiliated. Why, why the move to doing this over a spring break?
Cost. It's a thousand dollars more per person in the summer than it is, uh, in spring break.
Just, uh, curious on like, who, like, to what group is this like presented to? Like, is it just middle school, high school, et cetera?
So, um, Mrs. Chin, um, put out a, a survey to the middle school parents and they, she got, uh, interest from, I think, fourteen or fifteenth, eighth graders. I'm not sure whether, um, uh, the can't think. I can think of her first name. I can't think of her last name. I'm having a break. Our Mandarin teacher at the high school.
Oh, bet you.
Oh, yeah, Mrs. Who, um, whether or not she's, uh, going to survey her Mandarin classes as well. So it was open to the students taking Mandarin in the middle school to begin with, and, uh, I'm not sure if Mrs. Who is going to offer that to her, her students as well.
All right, thank you.
In the previous programs, I believe it was.
They did. Yes, it was both.
Okay, thank you. And moving on, uh, we're gonna move on to public comments on agenda, agenda action items only. Um, at this time, we invite members of the public to the podium to address the Board of Education on agenda action items only. Each participant must state their name and will be limited to three minutes to address the board. There will be no back and forth dialogue. Seeing no one coming up to the board, uh, to the podium, we will move on to discussion items. Does anyone have anything they wish to discuss? Old, new business? Okay, do we have any, we'll move on to correspondence. Any correspondence?
Do not.
Okay. So we will move on to our action items. Um, I would like to have a motion for items A one through A nine.
Mike, I'll go first. I move it.
I guess I'll second it.
Okay, uh, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, uh, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Let's say discussion, sorry. Okay, so moving on to education, can I have a motion for items B one through B six?
Oh, this is my turn. I'll so move.
I will also move it.
Any, any, uh, discussion? Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to athletics and co-curricula. Can we have a motion on C one through C three, please?
I will move them. Now, second.
Okay, any discussion?
So I just wanted to explain, um, C three.
Oh.
I was just gonna ask about.
Yeah, I, I figured you would, because it read, uh, redlining is not a process that happens, um, all over the place. So in New Jersey, uh, you cannot reduce a tenured certified staff member's salary. Um, the way the contract was previously written, they included certain stipends as pensionable, so they are paid in salary. They're not pensionable. Pensions decides what's pensionable, not contracts. And I believe we addressed that in the most recent negotiations. However, um, these stipend amounts for the PBSIS coordinator are, um, so what happens when you, you have, when someone's salary is being reduced? You can't reduce it. You have to wait until the salary rises to the point that it would have included the cost of the original stipend. So, or the cost of, uh, where the, where the salary was. So, um, this is the last year that we'll be redlining those stipends. And because of the position on the guide of these two teachers being different, that's why the amounts are different. Does that make sense?
Yep, thank you. Um, can we have roll call?
Yes. Oh, uh, we need a motion.
Oh, did, I thought I did motion. Okay, so we will. Motion for C one through C three.
Sorry, uh, we did, we did, uh, Walker motion, uh, and then.
And then we had discussion and now we're at roll call.
Yes. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
And Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, there's nothing in facilities, so we'll move to finance. Can I get a motion for E one to E six, please?
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion? Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Walker? Yes, Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and then.
Smart governance and policy. Um, we have to table F one. There is no HIB report. There's no HIB investigations done. I, and I expected one to be coming in, so I kept it on here. It's not completed yet.
So can I have a motion for F two and F three?
Yes.
Oh, so, okay. Can I have a motion to table F one, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Can we have roll call for tabling F one, please?
Yes, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now can we have a motion for F two and F three, please?
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion? And can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazella?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. And last, um, we will now open up the floor for public comments. At this time, we invite the members of the public to the podium to address the Board of Education on any wish item, any issue they wish to. Each participant must state their name and will be limited to three minutes to address the board. There will be no back and forth dialogue. Seeing no one coming to the podium, um, I will close public comment. And before we go, if there's anything else, if not, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The time is now, let me look, eight thirteen. The, uh, meeting is adjourned. The next public meeting will be held on Tuesday, December tenth in the Verona Commons at the Verona High School with confidential session starting at six PM and public session starting at seven PM. Thank you, and I hope everyone has a nice Thanksgiving.
Yeah.